I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alicia, will you please do roll call for us?
Jamie?
Present.
Kevin?
Here.
John?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Myself?
Here.
Donna?
Here.
Thank you, Alicia. Announcements, the next school board meeting, the next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven PM in the GSL High School Community Room, four-four-three, four-four-four. Acknowledgements? Any acknowledgements at this time?
I do have one, if it's okay.
Sure.
This past weekend, I was at home down my hometown, and as I was driving through the town and I drove past the high school, I noticed that they were, the rolling sign said, "Thank you to all the parent educators," because I know last week was, was it Minnesota, parent educator acknowledgement week, and so, and I'm sure this has been told to the pairs at school, but I just want them to know that the board really appreciates everything they do. I know there's, there's a lot of things, I know the majority of the things they do, I personally wouldn't be patient enough to do, so for all the work they do and everything they do, I want to make sure that they know the board appreciates all their work, too. Thanks.
And if I could just add, as we go through our school year, we have themes every year, okay? And coming up in April, we kind of go backwards from starting with seniors during that last week of May, then we get into coaches, and we honor each group. There'll be another week where we honor our paraprofessionals again, and then we also honor our teachers, like during that same week of National Teacher Day. So there is another acknowledgement of each of our groups as we go through from our themes that we have, just so that you guys, as a board, know that, maybe already did, but just to give you that information as well.
That's very, very good. Thank you to each of you. I think it's important to continue to acknowledge the hard work that many of the staff members do here at GSL in all capacities, so I think that there's never enough acknowledgements, and so thank you for that. Public input relating to the agenda, is there any public input relating to the agenda at this time? Second call for public input relating to the agenda. Third and final call for public input relating to the agenda. Hearing none. Reports and presentations? No presentations this evening are scheduled. We have some things within the agenda, however, that we'll get to later on. Administrators and committee reports, business managers' report, Michelle?
I'm just gonna pass for now, 'cause my items are all part of the agenda.
All right, thank you. Principals' report, Bill?
Yeah, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Michelle. I'll refer to a few items on our written report. Today, we had a half-day session with all K through six certified staff right in this room, and we focused on North Star Accountability, which is Minnesota's response to the federal Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA. We had some time to work across grade levels in PLCs, and talked about what North Star Accountability tells us, and it identifies schools for support, publicly reports data, and recognizes schools for success. And I want to give a special mention to Joy, who did a nice job in one of our parts in bringing up our common challenges, that, you know, it challenges us in the moment, and I think it will refresh us in the long term, so special mention to Joy and her efforts for that part. We also did a little PD today for support staff. Would like to thank Mrs. Keister for doing an hour session on positive adult language, reminding, reinforcing, and redirecting kids, you know, at all grade levels, whether you're talking about high school or preschool, anything in between, it's all about active supervision. And then Katie Hendrickson is an occupational therapist, we hire out of the cooperative. She did a session on working with some of our, Kevin, you mentioned, paraprofessionals who work with some of our more vulnerable kids, how we handle them, how we approach them, how we talk to them in a safe and respectful manner. So thanks again to Mrs. Keister and Katie Hendrickson for stepping up and taking care of that. You can look down, our instructional leadership teams. Lakeside will meet on March thirteenth, our combined team, focused on instructional improvement on the twentieth of March, and Lincoln will meet after school on the twenty-first, up in Mary Lemke's room. Toward the middle of the page, you can see our all-school meetings. About a week ago, we had a, we had a learning adventure for K through two, Subway and Swimming, kept twenty kids on campus, took them swimming, got them a Subway lunch, and a nice way, nice way to recognize kids on March sixth. One of the things we were looking to do is redoing our posters, our PBIS posters that state our expectations in the building, and we have a subcommittee breaking off, and we're going to tackle that on Wednesday after school with the full team meeting on April third. If you look down a little more, four-fifths of the way down, our math committee will meet on March twenty-sixth, and under state and federal programs, you know, nothing, nothing new right there, that K through six team is going to continue to work now in understanding what North Star Accountability is, and creating student outcome goals and mark goals. I'll turn over to the back. Minnesota Reading Corps, our applications have been submitted. Special ed, we're working on our nineteen-twenty caseload, starting from the bottom up, going from pre-K, K through two, which we did today. And our Star Autism Coaching will take place on April third, as we transition a large group of kids from preschool to kindergarten, who are working with the Star Autism Program. You can look, you can look under School Community Partnership, you can read those. Couple things I want to mention, we have kindergarten roundup on the fourteenth. Chess club starts on April second, special thanks to Terry Shogren for heading that up and leading that, chess is one of his passions. And then, I know, I know I shared this with John, but really proud of our staff, especially Heather and Scott for their implementation of Project Lead the Way. GSL Elementary is one of a couple hundred schools recognized nationwide as a distinguished school, so congratulations to all of them. And I'll close again, all of these items we've talked about, of course, we could not do without our dedicated, dedicated teaching staff, so thank you, and what questions do you have?
Bill, just one quick idea. When you're talking about creating some new posters for the PBIS, I know that we've got a piece of equipment here at the high school, I think that we share, the banner-maker thing or whatever, I don't know if that goes along the idea of posters and so forth, but an idea might be when you create, as a staff, what you're thinking about with regard to the contents of a poster and display, maybe there would be an opportunity to use that piece of equipment that we're sharing, that banner-maker or whatever, just an idea. Like I said, I don't know if it matches what the needs are, but just an idea to throw out there.
We will find out, because, you know, we're learning that in the little bit of work this subcommittee has done, they are, they're pricey. So if we can, if we can create what the kids need and save some money, absolutely, so thank you.
Yep, you're right. They do get spendy, but that visual piece is so important for the unity of the staff and the unity of the students, so there's definitely some value to it, but it does get spendy, so just a thought, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bill? Okay, any other information?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Matt?
Good evening. I'm gonna draw attention just to a couple of points on the report that I handed to each of you, and then I'll open it up to any questions. We also had an in-service day today. We had Greg Kushner come down and visit with us about RTI. He is from Solution Tree Resources. He is also a K-9 principal out of Canada, and our training was an all-day training. It went from eight-thirty to three-thirty this afternoon, and it was a fantastic opportunity for our staff to learn, and kind of to see what Tier One and Tier Two classroom interventions will look like moving forward next year. And it kind of just helps us meet the needs of all learners in our classroom, as opposed to, you know, the way he explained right now, is we've set our instruction kind of right in the middle, and this helps us gap that achievement between our high learners and our low learners, and I'm very excited for what this spring is gonna bring, with opportunities for our partner teachers to collaborate and work together, and what this does for GSL moving forward into the next years. The next thing I want to draw your attention to is our PBIS program. We have our Cohort Thirteen Training this Wednesday in Mankato. This will be our last training since we started the program two years ago. After this, we're kind of on our own to sustain and move forward, and I'm very confident that with the team that we have, we're gonna be okay. Southwest West Central offers sustainability training, which we'll look at going to about once a year moving forward, but this will be the eighth training that we've gone to since starting the PBIS program at the junior, senior high school. The next one I'd like to talk about is a solution-focused team. This is a team that meets twice monthly, and I've talked about this in the reports before. This helps with their child find process, kind of referral for special education, but it also talks about interventions that can be used in the mainstream prior to getting to a special ed referral. And one of the interventions that we are starting this year, or that we just recently started, is called IM4. It's a research-based behavioral intervention through the University of Minnesota, and we're piloting it right now on kind of a select group of students to see how this works, and then next year, planning to roll it out seven-twelve, and we've even talked with Bill about using it at the K through two setting as well. The 2019-2020 registration process has been completed. We have the numbers, and tomorrow, we should be distributing what courses will be offered to each department, and from there, the, decide which instructor will teach which class. And I think for right now, that's all I would like to talk about. The last thing, which is not on here, is Panther Power Hour. I know at the end of Term One, I gave you grade breakdowns between the number of Fs, I believe, over the last five years, and where we were currently. What I plan on doing, grades will be posted this Friday at eight-thirty for our next board meeting in April, is I'm going to bring to you the grade breakdown from F all the way through A, to see if it is more effective in our middle learners or high learners, or if we have any differences in data over the last five years at any grade level. Do you have any questions for me?
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Superintendent Report, Chris?
Thank you. One thing that I just wanted to add, too, is we also worked with a lot of our paraprofessionals today, and you look back at all of our school calendar closings and things like that, some of it was an opportunity lost from them to work, and so we offered today's training to help balance some of that kind of stuff, and so we had paraprofessionals, it actually worked out really well, for them to have that opportunity to come in to get trained, and then it also, in theory, normally this would have been a day off, but because of some of the missed opportunities to work because of school closings or late starts, we worked together to come up with this, and so it worked out really well for our staff in that aspect. Kind of just continuing on with the school calendar, you know, I don't know how much you've followed the legislative process and talked a little bit about that. I know that there's some bills that are floating through the Senate and the House that's talking a little bit about some of that forgiveness. In theory, we have our plan that's set, and our plan kind of takes care of all of those different things. I think in the end, what some of that kind of stuff is, is that there's some forgiveness there, that if you happen to not get some of the hours that you have from a scheduling standpoint, or from a student standpoint, that there's gonna be some forgiveness, that school districts would not get affected funding-wise if they don't get their hours, so that's kind of what you're feeling. But each district, I think, you know, I can't speak for the law yet, 'cause it's still coming, but each district just still has their means of how they're gonna fulfill that, and, you know, obviously, there's some contractual issues that you have to go through and things like that, but with our plan that we have in place, that I shared last month, we're set with all of that stuff, and so I guess we'll see what, number one, the weather continues to do, and then number two, what the actual bill has to say, but from our standpoint, we're good to go. Just an announcement, that I've been working with some of the local legislatures, they were soliciting a place to have a town hall meeting, and they have selected or asked GSL to help out, and we have done that, but on March twenty-second, which is Friday, our legislators are gonna be here in town, not only from the state level, but also the local level here, and the county level, ten o'clock to twelve o'clock at the GSL Auditorium, and so, you know, we're gonna have to start looking at making sure the parking is available for them, and some of those different logistics from that, but our way of being able to open them out, up, come up, come in during a school day, I think is gonna be an awesome experience for us. The other thing that we're also working with the county on is a foster care transportation pilot program, and basically, they did all the work, they just kind of signed on with us, so thank you to the county for doing that, but basically, it's an opportunity to provide funding for transportation if a foster child gets placed out of your district, and they want to continue to stay within your district. Well, then all of a sudden, the transportation comes into play, and so this is a pilot program to be able to see if they can work if that ultimately happens. Maybe it won't even happen in our district, but we're signed up, and we're hopefully gonna be able to see if that happens, 'cause like I said, at times, there may be a foster family or a foster child, and they get moved, but, "God darn it, I really like this school, I really like, and I want to stay where I'm at." This is an opportunity for that transportation to be able to happen, and so we'll see where all that goes. The rest of the stuff that I have, has spent lots of time with, is gonna be on the agenda, so if you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Committee reports? Are there any committee reports?
We had an ECFE meeting, and the, I guess the best, there are a lot of things we discussed, but there was a couple of points that I wanted to bring up. Alicia and Britta are, we're gonna be going to a schoolyard gardens conference at the arboretum, so they can learn about different types of plants and stuff to grow in our outdoor classroom, which I thought was kind of neat. We're also, we're writing a grant for United Way to try to get a stage built out in our outdoor classroom, which I think was kind of neat. A lot of the parents, we've gotten a lot of feedback, the parents are really liking the ECFE website and stuff, so that they can register online for classes and all that kind of stuff. They like the emails and just signing up for conferences and other programs and stuff. The Spring Fling is coming up again, and last year, if anybody remembers, the weather was really bad, and it was at Unhinged. This year, it's going to be at the ECFE Outdoor Classroom. Jason will still do the food, but it's gonna be here at GCL, or GSL, sorry. And some other, some other things, the registration, or, I lost my place here. Registering for school readiness and kindergarten, or ECFE will be March fourteenth, I believe, at nine AM, open house in the afternoon from six to seven. I think that was, oh, and they are planning a field trip to the Children's Museum of Southern Minnesota, which is in Mankato. That is Thursday, April eleventh. And the FFA Barnyard, they're gonna try for May rather than April, because, once again, in April, the weather's not all that great, so they're gonna do the barnyard in May. And that's about it.
Okay, thanks, Donna. Any questions for Donna? Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to back up to acknowledgements for just a second. One other acknowledgement that I'd like to make as a board is that we had Ms. Dane, a family and consumer science teacher, that just received the Minnesota Teacher of the Year for Fax Teachers, and I think that that's something, too, that, once again, as a district, we definitely celebrate our staff members in all capacities, and I think that that's a great accomplishment that she made, and I think the Chronicle also for covering that story in a past newspaper, so thank you for covering that, and congratulations to Ms. Dane for that great accomplishment. I think that that sheds light on the great quality staff that we have here at GSL, and so that's really something fun to be a part of, so thank you. Approving the Agenda, action item. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comment? Hearing none, I have a motion by John and a second by Kevin to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Approve the Consent Agenda, action item, enclosure number one. Please note that there is an addendum, and one slight modification that we'd like to make, and that is, under resignations, we have K Wilson, seven-twelve choir teacher effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. That should be a retirement of K Wilson, seven-twelve choir teacher, and the effective date of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen is still correct, but instead of a resignation, it would be a retirement. So with that correction, and with the addendum to the consent agenda, is there a motion? And is there a second? Any questions, comment, or discussion?
I need to abstain from the consent agenda, being my name is...
Yep. Yep, and that's under the hirings, we have John Lemke as JV football coach, so thank you for acknowledging that. I have a motion by Jason and a second by Donna to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? And an abstention by John, thank you. Old business, none at this time. New business, item A. SWWC Service Cooperative Agreements for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, action item, enclosure number two. The Glencoe Silverlake School District utilizes several services provided by SWWC Service Cooperative. The following services are recommended by administration. Contractor service, let me kind of run through these. We've got the child count on contracts based on the October first count. We have one thousand six hundred ten for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. We've got one thousand six hundred thirty-six for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Number one, service cooperative membership dues, twenty-five dollars is what it is for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, zero for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Number two, health and safety management assistance, two thousand three hundred forty dollars and ninety-eight cents. That would be an increase to three thousand two hundred two dollars and ten cents. Number three, regional management information center and Mars, other revenue reporting services, twenty-five thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. That would be, in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year, twenty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Number four, basic technology services, remains constant, two thousand two hundred dollars for both of those years, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Number five, special ed services, two thousand nine, two hundred nine thousand five hundred ninety dollars and fifty-seven cents. In the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year, it would be two hundred eleven thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Number six, behavior analyst services, option C is ten thousand dollars, and behavior analyst services, option A, in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year, would be four thousand one hundred sixty dollars. Business manager Sandra will provide information about the contracts Monday evening. Here we are, Monday evening, Michelle, you are on.
Here we are. SWWC is Southwest West Central Service Cooperative, just to clarify what that, those initials stand for. We have worked with the co-op for many, many years, as most of you are familiar with, excuse me. They provide a number of services for us that we'd have a hard time surviving, of those services. Some are pretty self-explanatory, but I'll just run through a couple explanations, and then if you have questions, just shout out. The membership dues is just basically being a part of the co-op to be able to allow us to take advantage of some of these contracts, and they offer a number of other services that we don't necessarily have a contract with, but other things that are available at different times. The Health and Safety Management Assistance Program they offer, they have a person on staff that comes out to our building two or three times a year that does our mock OSHA walkthroughs, which is a great help. She walks through the buildings, usually in either the spring or fall, she'll choose the Lakeside Building, and then the opposite, you know, then she'll do, this fall, she did the, this whole complex over here. So she's walking through, looking for any potential OSHA violations, gives us a chance to maybe take a look at them, repair them, do what we have to do before the real OSHA people would come in, so a great service that they offer with that. She's also available to offer assistance with any of the state reporting we have regarding our LTFM, revenue, or our health and safety reporting, all those type of things, so she's available for all of those things. The Regional Management Information Center, or we refer to that as RMIC, and the Mars, that's kind of a big contract, that supports all of our finance, our payroll, and our student system, which is the Mars program. So they offer us all the software for both payroll and finance, all the software upgrades, and all the support that goes along with that. The Mars, it's a little different, because we use a program to identify our students in infinite campus, but then that flows through to the Mars system, which has to be state-reported. So they assist with all our state reports, federal reports that need to take place. They provide a number of workshops, webinars, they come out and provide training when we have new staff, and we send staff there to be trained, so just a number of services, very valuable services for, especially our district office and our Mars secretaries. When they have a Mars question, they can reach out to the co-op, get that question answered, you know, almost right away of how to report a student, you know, when there's been a change. Basic technology services is just being a member of that, again, to get support from their departments when it comes to servers, connections, workshops, those types of things. Special education services, of course, is our big one. As you know, we employ a number of our own special ed staff, but there's a few areas that we rely on the co-op when we're not able to necessarily hire that person. One example would be deaf and hard of hearing. In the past, we've contracted for them, we had one or two years where we were able, we had enough needs in-house that we hired our own halftime person to cover those needs. Visually impaired, they have a person on staff, and usually, schools don't need a lot of time for visually impaired, so we contract with them for maybe a point one or a point two, and then they make districts to our, visits to our district to make sure that we have the support and programs in place to meet the needs of all those students. The other big areas is our, Bill mentioned, Katie Hendrickson does all of our OT. They come in and provide physical therapy as well. Once in a while, we have some students that have those needs. And also, probably the biggest one is their, their special ed director that we send, or that they send to us to help coordinate things with Mr. Butler, Mr. Foss, and all of our case managers. That person comes on a weekly, semi-weekly basis, depending on the needs that we have. They also provide needs to our preschool area, just a lot of support services when it comes to handling all those needs, those IEPs for those students. Just a great, great resource for us, because it's become more and more complicated in the area of special ed, and make sure we're meeting those needs and the student requirements. The behavior analyst services, it's not part of special ed, because we can't use special ed funding to cover those, because behavior analyst isn't necessarily a special ed kids. That could be any student that is having a behavior, this is a person that comes in and helps work with the case manager, with the principals, with the teachers, to observe maybe a student and their behaviors, offer suggestions, changes in interventions, those type of things. So you see that one dropped a little bit, we reevaluated what our needs were for the coming year, and our staffing that's in place, sometimes we increase that if we have some young staff that might need additional support, and for next year, we're looking like we can decrease that as well. Back on the special ed one, you know, two hundred and eleven thousand, we do use all of our federal special ed money that covers that, or just about all of that, so it's not like that's additional money coming out of it. We do get federal special ed dollars... We do get federal special ed dollars that's covering the cost of those contracts. So, that's a, that's a big aid that helps us with those services. Questions that you have on any of these contracts? None of these are anything new? Like I mentioned, we've worked with the co-op for many, many years. So, just some explanations for you.
With, with the behavior analysts, how would Bill or Matt, you guys think, is there any, would you find a need for that person more in the fall when the students are just coming in? Or are you seeing it throughout the year? Do you think, you know, after making the transition from summer to something more, I don't want to say rigid, but something more structured, is that when you think you'd find that need more?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. You know, though, thinking back, Kevin, those needs pop up. Certainly, they do in the fall. For example, though, this year, you know, we had a, we had a need pop up right after Christmas and New Year's break. I would say you're right. Typically, you know, the, the greatest need will, will come in the fall, transitioning back to school. But it can certainly come at any time. And the reason Michelle mentioned, you know, we had a, we were mentoring one of our new EVD teachers at elementary this year, which of course started right in the fall. And we're now, you know, backing off of that service for next year.
The other thing that I'd add with the behavior analysts, if we run out of our hours that we're buying with these packages, we do have the availability to, to buy more if it's on a need basis. It's that whole thing that the cooperative wants to do is they want to sell all, or sell these packages to different districts so that they can have an idea of how many employees they can get for these behavioral specialists. And then, you know, so that they can go, but at the same time, if you still need the services, you can, you can still buy some. If that makes sense?
Yeah. My question was just, you know, if the staff we have on board, I'm sure there's no problem. But it's, if it's not being reinforced when they're, you know, when students are away from school, I would guess that would be when the bigger need would come from more help. Okay.
My comment would, would have been the same as, as Bill's. We, just by the nature of the grades that I have at 712, we don't have as big of a need because most of these students that would need a behavior analyst have had those services from K. through 6. But the times that I've seen and that we've had them come in were right at the beginning of the year, mostly for the transition from 6 to 7, where they're going to a seven-period day. And then also coming back from Christmas break, where they have a little bit more of a difficult time transitioning.
Are those services pre-K? Or do they start with, at the K. level?
We've, we've used them at pre-K.
Okay.
Yes. More and more, actually.
Yeah. Especially with the screening and so forth. And it's good to get that data early and, and have those interventions. Yeah, get the expertise and get those interventions in place and stuff with behavior and academics and the whole works. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Thank you. I will entertain a motion at this time.
She'll move.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Alicia to contract with Southwest-West Central Service Cooperative for the services as listed above for the 2019-2020 school year. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item B, request for approval of 2021 trip abroad, action item, enclosure number three. Sarah Beckman, Spanish teacher, requests approval for a nine-day trip to Costa Rica and Panama in June of 2020. Students who have taken Spanish II would be eligible and would have the option of earning a half-credit elective in Spanish. The trip would be educational. The trip will be $3,260 or $211 per month for 15 months. Donations will be sought from charitable organizations such as Lions Club, Snow Pros, and the Booster Club. Is there a motion? Who did that one come from? Jason? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Questions, comment, discussion?
Sarah's here tonight, just in case you guys have any questions for her. But basically, this is another overnight trip, very similar to the ones that you've approved in the past. It is on the different year, correct, Sarah, from, from the ones that the other high school people are doing? And obviously, it's a, probably a group of, different group of kids, more than likely. Maybe there's a one or two that are crossover. We'll see. But it's the EF tours. We've had the discussion about the insurance, so that should be all taken care of. It's another great opportunity for kids.
Is there a, I'm sorry, Scott. Go ahead, John. Is this the same agency as what the other tours, correct, if I remember right?
EF tours, yep.
Is there a certain number that you say you have, you have to have a certain number of students that sign up? And is there like a deadline when they have to be signed up for?
There's an early bird deadline. That would be the end of March to get the discount rate, from what I understand. But beyond that, as far as the deadline to sign up, no. I mean, obviously, the people go on the trip. And then, the number of students per chaperone, you need six kids. So, I'm hoping to get at least 12.
Any other questions, comment, discussion? As that trip, you know, takes place and is completed, we welcome you back, along with students that have participated, to kind of do a presentation. We, as a board, always like to hear how the experience went. And once again, to, to hear the benefits of it and so forth. As we approve, as we approved previous trips, that's kind of one of the things that we have sort of established as a board is that invitation back to provide, you know, the information, like I said, and how it went. So. All right. Anything else? With that being said, I have a motion by Jason and a second by John to approve the request from Sarah Beckman to go to Costa Rica and Panama on a nine-day trip abroad in June of 2020. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item C, resolution providing for a public hearing to consider granting a proposed property tax abatement. Action item, roll call vote. The Glencoe-Silverlake School Board will hold a public hearing on April 15th, 2019, at 6:30 PM at the Glencoe-Silverlake Schools Community Room, Room 443-444, located at 1621 East 16th Street, Glencoe, Minnesota, to consider granting an abatement bond. The purpose of granting the proposed property tax abatement is to provide funds to finance construction of and improvements to the Glencoe High School and Lakeside Elementary School parking lots, parking lot maintenance, and improvements district-wide and related financing costs. The total estimated amount of the proposed tax, proposed property tax abatement by the district is $1,433 over nine years. An amount estimated to be sufficient to pay the principal and interest on $1,180,000 of bonds issued to finance the parking lot projects. All who wish to be heard as to the proposed property tax abatement will be given an opportunity to express their views at the time of the public meeting. Like I mentioned, the resolution will be adopted by a roll call vote. Michelle, you have some information for us? How about if I look for? Go ahead with the information first and then we'll go for a motion and a second and a roll call vote. Thank you, Michelle.
I kind of combined the information for letter C and D on your agenda so we can kind of talk about the, the parking lot process and the abatement process all at the right time. Am I in your way? There's not a good place to stand. All right. So, our process, as you know, kind of started a few years back already, as we think about it. Originally, we were going to have this parking lot as part of the building project. And that was our plan all along. And they were kind of wrapping things up. But we knew last summer, there were still trailers out here that we couldn't get it done. So, we were going to push it off one more summer. So, then we kind of started on moving ahead. Well, we got into the middle of that, realized the building project was over budget, that we weren't going to be able to do it as part of the project. Had to come up with a different way to finance it. And then soon we came across doing the abatement bonds to see if we could get that done. So, about, almost a year ago, last April, we had the board discussions about how to proceed with this. We got the go-ahead to start working on the process, worked on the design. We brought on Dave Ray with AJA to help us get through this process and the design. And then we moved ahead with getting the bid. So, where we're at tonight is, what Jamie had just read is the resolution calling for the public hearing. And then the next agenda item would be to approve the, the construction bid. In April, then, we'll hold our public hearing. And then we'll have another resolution at the regular board meeting that would approve granting the abatement. We'd sell the bonds May 13th at that board meeting, and we'd close on the bonds June 6th. The project timeline would be in the summer. Mike always says it doesn't like my voice. So, well. So, we opened the parking lot bids February 26th. It was exciting to see that we had six bidders that came in. I was getting a little nervous about quarter to two because nobody was coming in. And then you look in the parking lot and that's where you see them all sit. So, very happy that we got six bidders that actually came in. And I know this one's a little blurry, but you had, I had sent you the information and you have that. The low bid came in from Dunick at $965,000 and ranged all the way up to 1.5 million on that. So, very pleased with the bids. And at first, I was a little skeptical, worried that Dunick, it's like, what did they miss in the bid project? Seeing that it was so much lower than the high bid. But when you look at the other couple of low bids, real close, similar, so nothing alarming. And the one came in right at 1.2, and that was the projection that AJA had made for us. So, he was very pleased with this. So, what happens after the bid then is Dave takes the, the bids back with him to his office. He starts reviewing them. He goes through fine detail of Dunick's bid. He reviews and he calls the subcontractors that they've listed in the bid. He makes sure, verifies all that their numbers are correct, that they're accurate, that they're standing behind their numbers, and there was no mistakes made. Makes sure that they have, you know, all their ducks in a row. And then they send us a letter of recommendation for you, as the board, to approve. So, they are recommending to go ahead with Dunick and their bid. So, once we have that in place, we start to look at what our costs are going to be and what we need to ask for with our abatement bond to make sure we have the funds to cover that. So, as we break that down, we first take the contract amount. And that contract amount, like I said, 965,768. And then we have to build in a contingency. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But right now, we've got contingency listed at 90,000. Our fees for AJA Engineering is 5% off the base contract. They don't include the contingency. So, about 48,000 for those fees, for a total of 1,104,056. Now, we've already incurred a few other expenses. Hallberg Engineering had to come on board to do the lighting projections and design that's going out on the parking lot. Silverlake, we've never had a survey done. They strongly recommended we get that survey done, especially for that parking lot, to make sure you have those property lines correct when we're buddying up against the, some residential there. And then a little bit of printing costs. Right now, just about $6,000 in expenses that we've incurred up to this point. So, I want to talk just a little bit about the contingency. Dave from AJA is recommending a contingency of 90,000. Normally, in projects, you look at that 5% to 6% contingency amount would be about $50,000. The more we talk through it between Chris, myself, and Dave, and our past experience working with contingencies, as you knows from our building project, more comfortable moving to that $90,000 amount. Our past experience with our building project, we know our contingency was not set high enough. You know, we ran into a little trouble about that. Unknown expenses, and out here, we know there's poor soils. There's poor soils, subsoils underneath the current asphalt. Now, we've done the soil borings, you know, a year and a half or so ago. So, they know the problem areas. But once they start digging, if there's something else that pops up that we're not aware of, especially, who knows what will happen this spring? We just felt that we wanted to have a little bit more of a contingency to say we've got enough to cover that. If you don't have that, any unexpected expenses that show up come out of your district budget somewhere. Operating capital, long-term facilities, maintenance. You know, we're not at a point right now where we say, yeah, that'd be fine if we have to come up with 100 grand. So, that's another reason. When the project is done, any money that's left in that contingency that you haven't had to use on your project. So, right now, we know that we've already spent that $6,000. This now can come out of your contingency. Any other unexpected costs can come out of that. But anything left after that, which we hope there'd be quite a bit, that has to stay in a reserved account that will be used for parking lot maintenance. Any future parking lot project, seal coating, you know, the Lincoln Lot we did a few years ago already, that's almost to the point where it needs a new seal coat. You know, the, the east entrance way, it's been quite a few years since we did a seal coat on that. There's always going to be parking lot maintenance, so that money can sit there. You, as a board, can decide how that money is used going forward, whether it's just sitting in a maintenance or if there's some other project that comes up that you want to use. But it can be used district-wide for any type of parking lot. So, once we know what those dollars amount, then I work with Ellers Financial to come up with how that bond looks and what we're going to be asking for a tax impact on those. So, they take the, how much money we need, and then they kind of backtrack what our expenses are. So, this sheet here, and you've got a bigger copy of this in there with your packet included, so it's also clearer for you to see. It's a, one that looks like this. So, this first sheet here is what they call sources and uses, meaning where's the money coming from? And then how are we going to use that money that we're asking for? So, we're asking the, the bond amount of 1,180,000. And how we came up with that amount was taking that 1,104,000 worth of expenses and then rounding it up a little bit. We added an extra 5,000 on there because there's virtually no tax impact to increase that a little bit. We're estimating a little bit amount of interest. Sorry, I moved my screen. Because if we get the bond sales June 6th, the bonds come in, we're going to have probably two months that we'll be sitting on that money before we pay out the majority of it to the contractor. So, a little bit of interest on there. And then the expenses that go along with that, about $15,000 goes back to the bidder for their bidding discount. Capitalized interest, which I'll talk about on the next screen, what that is. And then your legal and fiscal costs. So, that leaves us the net amount available for the project cost of 1,105,000. So, the bond schedule, because of the timing of this, when I mentioned the capitalized interest, the first payment that's going to be due on the interest is going to be in February of 2020. And we're going to owe $23,718. Now, we won't be levying for this, these dollars until this December, when you approve the next round of levy. So, we're not going to have the money in time. If we levy it in December, it's going to be paid by the taxpayers in 2020. But it's not for our next, until our next fiscal year that we're going to get that money in. So, you want to make sure that you've got some money to be able to pay that capitalized interest that's due, your, your first interest payment that's due before your money comes in. So, they call that capitalized interest. The rest of this sheet just lays out what's your bond and interest payments are on, for the nine and a half years. So, this bond is set up at 9.67 years, so just under 10 years. And right now, they're estimating the interest rate at 3%. Those numbers will get finalized once we actually have the bond sale and we sell those bonds. And then we'll know what that actual percent is. And then you have the tax impact of what the bond is going to be impacting our taxpayers too. So, looking at this, if you look at $100,000 house, it's going to be about $8 per year for that 9.67 years. If you're looking at a $200,000 house, you're talking- If you're looking at a $200,000 house, you're talking $19 per year. A million dollar commercial industrial business would be $208 a year and you can read through them. I'm just pulling out a couple of numbers there. And then your agriculture homestead and non-homesteaded is all based on cost per acre. So that's how that's broken out on there. So that's kind of the summary of the bidding and the abatement bond and the resolutions that we need to move forward to get this to happen. Again, if you look at that, that bigger sheet, it's a little easier to see those numbers. The slides just came in kind of, kind of blurry on the PowerPoint. So questions on the process, on the bids process or on the abatement bond?
Michelle, the expenses incurred so far of $5,910
Yep.
For Hallberg, for Sunday Land surveying and printing costs, has that already been paid?
Those have been paid.
Okay, and so then you were mentioning with the contingency, in a sense, we would kind of reimburse ourselves from that is how that would work?
Yep. We have a resolution that you as a board passed in 2013 and that resolution states anytime you have any type of bond, that you are allowed by declaration to pay yourself back for any expenses incurred prior to a bond sale.
Okay. And then one other question that I had was the land surveying that was done for the Silver Lake lot that has now been like plotted and filed with the county because it hadn't been before or?
I'm not sure if they file it yet with the county. I just know they, I haven't seen all the results. I know they have them to make sure that we've got the property lines where they need to be before they finish the design.
Okay, and this is just for the lakeside parking lot?
Correct.
The school building property itself has always been plotted and surveyed and filed and whatever?
It would, you know, at some point, if you were going to sell or do something with that, it would probably need a new updated survey. I have not seen a survey on the, on the school lot itself.
Okay.
But just strongly needed this one for the parking lot.
And is, is the one side of the parking lot an alley or is that part of our property?
Nope, it's still an alley.
Okay.
Yep. And once all the snow is gone and I'm sure they'll put up the stakes that we'll be able to see it a lot closer, what it is, if the snow disappears by June.
Good question.
How come the Dunick, is that how you pronounce it?
Yep.
How come they don't have a start date or a completion date?
They just didn't fill it in on their bid sheet. It wasn't required to fill it in. They know the did, the timeline, the timeframe for it and they can easily comply with that.
Okay, just making sure that they have time to fit us in there because
Yep, nope.
We don't, you know, we have a small window of time to get it done and I just want to make sure, okay, all right, thank you.
And you know, anytime we start to do work out here, it's going to rain because that's just, we're just fortunate, so you know, that's why we've said August 1st, but I would, you know, anticipate it's going to go a little longer just because weather is never in our favor when we dig up anything back there. When we did the tennis courts, it was a downpour. When we started this, it was a downpour, so. So, but we can't control that, so we'll do the best we can of a juggling parking.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Dunick is out of Prinsburg. Some of you I'm sure have heard of Dunick before, but they're, one of their main offices, Prinsburg, very, very large company. I know they have main offices also down in Texas. So they, they come in and I think can get the job done. Dave from AJA has worked with them numerous times and has always had success with them.
I've had, excuse me, I've had many dealings with them, working with them and having them do work for us. And like I shared with you, Michelle, one of the things, my only concern is that we have a process in place at the beginning of the construction season. Things do come up that also the architects, our engineers are not around, they're on vacation. Dunick is the type of outfit, they're going to come in with a lot of equipment and they're going to come in with a lot of manpower and they're going to hit it hard. But in order to, for us, we'll save money and land, but we make sure, I want to make sure that there's process involved. So if the new questions do come up, we need them answered on a timely basis because Dunick is the type of outfit, they will pull their equipment out and go somewhere else. You know, if we're, we don't have a timely basis, that was my main concern.
And I'm glad you brought that up because I did have a note here, I just forgot it. I had called AJA, John, after I talked to you with that same concern. They will assign a project manager to this. It might be Dave himself on this project because it's, you know, fairly small project to them. So that project manager, if you remember, similar to our building project, we had somebody from the architect firm, Ahmed, that was here every week. We had weekly meetings. They will also have somebody here. Now because of the project is what it is, they might not be here every week, but they're definitely going to be available for them if any issues, questions come up that they, they will have a team that will be assigned to this project along with the project manager. So they will be onsite either weekly or every other week, but definitely available. They said, me, Chris, we will not be taking those phone calls, questions from Dunick. It'll go right to the engineering firm, so.
And the scale of the project is, you know, resurfacing for the most part except for there's some spots that we think could potentially have some reconstruction. That's where the balancing act comes into play for, for that to happen. Hopefully it all goes well with, with working together. But that's the scope of the project, just so that you guys know what they're doing. We're not reconstructing this whole entire parking lot. We're resurfacing it, but we do know that there's some spots that's going to need to have some reconstruction. And so from the engineering standpoint and from what they recommended to balance the cost for our taxpayers, that was the correct thing to do to say, hey, we're going to get what we need is a brand-new parking lot that's going to last and at the same time be very conscious of our price. Does that make sense?
Is there a warranty?
There's always a warranty, Kevin. It just expires before you need to use it. The April public hearing, we will have Ellers here for that. They conduct that, so you as a board don't have to worry about that, that they, they take care of that and they're here, so.
What are we going to do as far as making it possible for the public to use the facilities? Because I mean, that's basically our only place to park.
We've got Lincoln now and we're connected.
And we're connected.
People can park at Lincoln. You know, we'll work out the logistics to make sure they can park there. You know, somebody come and use the fieldhouse so it doesn't conflict with our summer school. So, you know, we'll put up some signs, we'll make sure it's safely used. We'll have the front of the high school, there's a little bit parking there. You know, we'll have our service road because we're not doing the service road as part of that. So we'll have to set that up, kind of lay that out once Dunick, we have our pre-construction meeting, so we'll have that discussion. But I see the Lincoln Lot as being our, our main lot for the public to get over to the fieldhouse.
We'll make it work.
Okay. We don't have much other choice. You know, anybody that's going out to the athletic complex, we can head them out straight towards the, the back parking lot there and the soccer fields, you know, they might have to walk a little bit. So we're just going to have to work that out as, depending on where their equipment is, can they come on that service road and go out? But it'll just be some logistics that we're going to have to coordinate for those couple months and.
Yeah, I do, I am, I'm just somewhat concerned about making it possible for the public to know where they can go and where they can't go and stuff too because
We'll be telling them.
You know, some of them, you know, grandparents coming to watch the grandkids and all that kind of stuff and dropping off kids.
Yep.
Just so that there's not a lot of frustration there.
Yep, I'm, there'll be some, somebody, we always have somebody get, yeah.
We'll be indicating where to park and where to go and all that type of stuff, so.
You know, and we'll have the fieldhouse staff make sure they're putting out, you know, if they're coming for swimming lessons, come in this door, park here and we'll do the best we can on, on all that. We know going into this, you know, that's going to be a challenge, but it, that's the only thing we can do is make it work because we need to get it done and they don't want to be driving out there when they're laying asphalt, so.
Right, yeah, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Michelle, for Hallberg, doing the electrical, did they do the electrical planning or who does the actual electrical work? And have we been in contact with Glencoe Light &amp; Power with some cooperation or some communication?
Yes, we met with them. Hallberg came in and just really came up with the electrical design and, and where to run the electrical wires, all those type of things. But yes, we did meet with, with Light &amp; Power. What else did Hallberg do? They, Dunick subcontractors for their electrician. I think the subcontractor was Quad Electric, Quadie, Quadie, yep. I haven't seen the full subcontractor list yet because Dave still has all that.
Okay.
But, you know, the contractor, like Dunick, then he reaches out to any electrician that wants to bid on it and then that compiles into the one large bid, but, and I think we'll have some rebates coming again on some of that lighting. We've kind of maxed out a lot of our rebates that we can only get so much a year through Light &amp; Power, but we work real closely with Dave on that.
So would this, would this be a new year or how, how would that be about that?
Their year starts January, so we actually just got another rebate check from our project.
Okay.
Because it's kind of confusing with Light &amp; Power. They have to pay out so much in rebates, but once they pay that out, they've hit their max for the year. So we've probably still got another year of rebates that we'll be getting.
Okay.
So we're kind of tracking that. So it's nice when that check comes like, yes, they got more money to send us, so.
And will we be getting additional lighting or just more LED that lights up more? Will we be getting more poles? What, what will we be getting for electrical?
Well, we've talked, when we talked, met with Dave, the poles that are out there, we're probably going to convert them to LED to get a little more efficient and better lighting. And then the design of the parking lot includes that pathway that's going to go from this door here out to the complex. So it's going to basically separate the parking lot into two parking lots. So it's going to have this middle walkway divider and it's going to have light poles on there. You remember Chris, six, eight of them?
Yeah.
So I'd have to look at the drawing.
They're going to be designed where they're going to be, you know, very spreading up the light.
They'll kind of, spreading up.
Spreading up the light. It's not just, you know, a drawdown. You know what I'm saying? They're designing it so that it can work not only to light up the pathway, but also to provide light to the parking lot.
Yeah.
Diffuse.
Yeah.
The light will be diffused so that it
Yeah.
And they're not going to be humongous light poles, they're going to be on the, on the shorter side, on that walkway, so, but not where you can.
And what I see, I think it's kind of similar to what the new light standards in Glencoe are. You know, if you go down to Center, you know, like Armstrong, and some of the other light standards, I would say they're about 12, 12-foot tall.
Yeah.
They have a gold on top.
Yep.
That's what I see in the red ones.
Will there be a drawing at the April 15th? Any questions?
I've got the drawing. I, you know, I had it along last month, I didn't grab it tonight, so, but I've got it and you can stop at any time if you want to see it. Otherwise, I'll bring it in April and I'm sure they'll have it for, or we'll bring it for the public hearing.
Will we be gaining, losing or maintaining parking stalls?
We're going to be, I would say gaining in Silver Lake, just because it's now going to, with the pavement and it's going to be lined, they're going to be able to get more in there than how they're doing it right now. Here we are going to lose a little because of, we're adding some curbing at the end of each row. So that's going to lose us a little spots. Nothing where it's going to affect, you know, we look at our largest event as graduation typically, other than, you know, once in a while a football game, we're still going to be okay.
Yeah, and, and the whole design had safety as the number one feature. And so, you know, a big event, you know, you may have to take an extra five minutes to get out, but in the big picture of the whole parking lot, you are going to have a much safer environment for kids, for families, for community members, and it's going to look really, really nice.
Will the dumpsters outside the fieldhouse be moved so that that isn't going to damage the new asphalt because of the weight?
They need to be moved yesterday.
Yeah, we need them moved, we just
That and a pile of snow.
Where to put them, yeah. It's, um
Yes, they are, had that discussion and conversation.
Yep, and it's, it's difficult because of, you know, the, the access from here, it goes right out there. If they don't have those, they're going, you know, longer way around the building. So we've had that debate, that discussion. We don't like them out there, they're unattractive, but it's like, where can we put them? So we're going to work on a solution for that.
Yeah, well, and it's, it's just plain and simple, the weight, you know, on the new asphalt, you know, if you get that in there, we don't want to damage.
We will gain some handicap spots right in front of the fieldhouse here that is going to be definitely designated for handicap. You know, that's the one thing we hear from our fieldhouse members is there's never enough handicap spots for them to have a good place. So we're going to have some designated right along, there'll be sidewalking go along here.
There'll be sidewalking, which right now they don't have, so it'll be an improvement.
What about a motorcycle parking area?
Uh, no, you, you can park that somewhere.
You can have a stall.
No.
We'll give you a whole stall.
Right next to the dumpster.
Yeah. We did not talk about motorcycle parking, so.
Right, right by the snow, snow thrower.
Right in the entryway here. I'll hit the automatic door.
We'll just call that your garage door opener. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Any other information, Michelle? Okay, Chris, any other information? Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll take a second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Jason and a second by Alicia to approve the resolution providing for a public hearing to consider granting a proposed property tax abatement. This is a resolution that will be adopted by roll call vote. Alicia, will you please help with that?
I need Alicia to, just want to point out, I think you want to say four again.
Four.
Yeah. Four.
Kevin?
Four.
John?
Four.
Jason?
Four.
Myself, four. Donna?
Thank you, Alicia. Item D, acceptance of parking lot bid. Action item enclosure number four. It is a recommendation of Dave Ray from AJA Engineering Superintendent Sanju and Business Manager Sander to accept the parking lot bid from Dunick Incorporated for $965,768 for the GSL High School and Lakeside Elementary School Parking Lot Project. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any questions, comments or discussion? I have a motion by John and a second by Donna to accept a bid from Dunick Incorporated for $965,768 for the school parking lot project. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item E, school plan for 2019-2020, discussion only. Superintendent Sanju and Business Manager Sander will present information regarding the school plan for the 2019-2020 school year.
All right, this is the time of year where we get to start talking about our planning for next year, budget, fund balance, class sizes, enrollment, all that fun kind of stuff. From, so you each have a copy of this and then I have it on this screen as well. I always, I love leaving this picture on here because it just reminds me, hopefully reminds you, when we look back at this, how far we've come and it's just so neat to see where we were and where we're, where we're at now. But I did go out today to snap this picture because that was last year at this time and I'm like, yeah, we got a little bit more snow than, than last year at this time, so I like looking back at that one because it's, it's quite an accomplishment. So what, like I said, what we're going to talk about is budget a little bit, fund balance, enrollment, class sizes, staffing, and then some of our recommendations of where we're at tonight from all our executive cabinet discussions. So the first thing we're going to take a peek at is just the current year budget. This year is, the column here is last year's fund balance for each of our categories. We have general fund, food service fund, community service fund, building construction fund, debt service, our scholarship account and our internal service account. Those are all our different funds that we maintain within our district budget. And then we have a column that shows our revenues for each of those categories, our expenditures, and then our projected fund balance for June 30th of 2019. So throughout the year, as you know, we track all our budget revisions that need So throughout the year, as you know, we track all our budget revisions that need to be made. Those can be changes in enrollment that affect our state aid. They can be changes in staffing, insurance, any number of things. So right now in the revenue, and I don't have the original budget on here. That's in your current budget book that we approved last June. But right now, the revenues here have increased a little bit. We've had an increase in our general education aid just because of our pupil units. When I did the original budget, I had them a little lower down and they came in a little higher. Our special ed revenue have increased about $100,000. About $60,000 in federal dollars is a little bit higher. A little bit more in non-public transportation. And then just some fees and those type of things equaled about $12,000. On the expenditure side, we did increase about $200,000 related to salary and benefits payout in our health savings account, lane changes, those type of things that have happened throughout the year. And then we did have a decrease though of about $77,000. So overall, expenditure budgets are only up, you know, $125,000 and our revenues are up higher than that. So that's looking a little bit better than what we were back in June. So looking at these numbers in the general fund, it equals a 22% to 23% fund balance ending at June 30th. Our food service, community service, I haven't gotten any revised budget numbers from those. I've sent the budgets out to those directors, waiting to meet with them if they have any budget changes. Normally, those couple of areas, along with debt service, scholarship, we don't see a lot of budget revisions. They might be real minor throughout the year. Those are pretty, pretty set as we start the year. Now, the building construction fund with our abatement project going on, we will see some changes by, by the time we approve this revised budget either in May or June. That's normally when I bring the revised budget to you as a board for approval. But the building construction fund will change because that's where the abatement money is going to flow through. That flows into the building construction. You won't see a change in the debt service because we won't have a debt payment until the following year. But the abatement revenue will come in. There'll be a little expenses that go out, but I see from the contractor standpoint, most of those expenses will go out after July 1st. So not a lot of changes in this. Now, we've had more expenses that have come out of the building construction fund because we're still tracking, even though we don't have money, you can see we ended at a negative. We're still tracking all those expenses in the construction fund. So we know exactly where we are when we're all set and done with the project of what everything costs. And then we'll be making some fund balance transfers to clear some of that out by the end of the year. So that's kind of a look at the, the current year budget. So then I take that, I need a good, you know, what I'm comfortable with is a good revised budget so I can start working on the preliminary budget for the 1920 school year. So this is currently where we're at. I'm pulling in the fund balances from the prior sheet. Again, I'm not going to focus on all these other budgets right now because I haven't even started to look at them. I mean, I know what my debt service budget is going to be right away because that's all based just on levy and bond schedule payments. So that one's fairly simple to do along with these others. So general fund is where we focus because as you know, that's where the majority of all our expenses come out when we're talking about staffing, enrollment, class sizes. That's where that's all affecting. So I pull in the estimated fund balance again, which is just an estimated. Then I start taking a look at the revenues. What are our revenues going to be for next year? What's the legislators going to do? What is that formula allowance going to do? So right now, I've got built in that, in that revenue budget, an increase on the formula allowance of one and a half percent. Now, we don't know what the legislators are going to do. We do know it's a budget funding year at the legislator's office. We do foresee some type of formula increase. What that looks like, we don't know. I've talked to, you know, quite a few peers that are even using a 2% estimated fund balance or formula increase. That to me is a little high right now. It kind of puts me out on my, my uncomfort level. I think with our new governor and just the talk that we're hearing and the state budget surplus, I think we're going to hopefully see that one and a half percent. So I think it's maybe a little conservative. There's also a lot of talk about special ed changes. That keeps coming. I don't know if there'll be any more money, if they're just going to look at more changes that affect your case managers and those type of requirements. But we'll see where that goes. On the expenditure side, I've built in an assumption for negotiations because we are entering a negotiation year for both our certified staff, our non-certified staff, our principals group, a couple other individual contracts that will all fall into there and affect that. Right now, I do have a slight drop in the enrollment. We've got kindergarten registration coming up. That's going to give us a good picture of what those kindergarten numbers look like. But just looking at our current numbers, and we'll look at the enrollment here in a minute. But right now, estimating that that might drop by about 11. Doesn't sound like a lot, but when you equate that to dollars, that equals about $90,000 for us. So that's a big drop, almost 1% when those enrollment numbers drop. So we look at all that and then we look at what that's going to do to our projected fund balance. And then that gives me an idea saying, we're either meeting our fund balance policy or we're not meeting that fund balance policy. When we fall below that, that's where I go to superintendent. I go to the principals in our executive cabinet meetings and that's where the work begins is because we know we have to make some adjustments to maintain that fund balance policy as directed by you, the school board. So here's just a snapshot of our current enrollment numbers by grade level. And you can see where those are. Your early childhood, that's what the EC is. We put them about 10, but if you'd asked the early childhood staff, they see a lot more than 10 kids. They see roughly 40, I don't know what the numbers is right now, 40 to 45, somewhere in there. But they're seeing, seeing those kids for a very limited time. They see them for so many minutes per day, per week, however that works out for that student. So even though they're seeing 40 kids, when you break that all down and you report their attendance during the year, it comes back and it equals roughly 10 to 12 full FTEs. So we get funding for them, but they're not funded the same. You can't count them as 40 kids because they're not here full-time. So you can see there, the breakdown by the rest of the grades and then the total. So I don't include those EC kids in that number rate there. But we've been averaging that 1585, 86, 1583, right in there. We've been pretty steady. One leaves, one comes. So it's kind of nice to see that stable enrollment. Would we want it to grow? Absolutely, but we're happy with stable. So then alls we do is we take those and roll those numbers forward to the next year. So then we can, the principals can look at that and help determine their registration, their class sizes, and really start to break those numbers apart based on actual numbers, based on student needs, all those type of things. When I do my original estimating, I always just plop in 100 for a kindergarten number. That's kind of been where we've been at the last few years. That's just a good solid number to base that projections on. In the ninth grade, that's where we pick up our First Lutheran students. Right now, they only have currently seven students in their eighth grade. I think that was the latest number I had. I don't, is that close? Yep, seven. I've got those counted in there. We don't always pick up all of those students. Some families choose to, to further their education with their kids somewhere else, you know, to continue to go to another parochial school. But I've got those seven in there right now. So we don't know that usually until Mr. Saboda will meet with those kids now in the spring, April. I don't know if he's got it scheduled yet, where they go through the registration process and see which of those students will be coming over here. We always review the class sizes. You know, this is just a guideline that was set for us by the board back in 2005. Again, it's a guideline. It's not a, it's not a mandate. It's just a good guideline that helps us follow where we're at. You know, I think we've, it's come real important this year as we've been reviewing the scheduling and how things are playing out in our, especially our 912, to make sure that we're not doing those classes of six kids, four kids. We want to focus on that 18. Now, if we have a class and it's a high-level class of 15, we're not going to turn those kids down. But if we have a class where kids are four that are registering, we try to focus those kids on, on another class if at all possible. So we've seen that affect our whole discussion and budget plans quite a bit more this year than we have in the past. So then we start breaking it down by sections at the elementary. Now, you know that the high school is kind of a different animal than what the elementary is because of the, the schedule and because it's a student-driven schedule. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. See, currently right now, we have five sections in kindergarten through fourth grade. Our current fifth grade is at four sections and our sixth grade is at five sections. Now, you can see with those numbers there, they're both at 107. So that has left us with a lot of discussion regarding both of those grade levels. So when we kind of play it side by side, current year and next year projections, you can see with the five sections of each, except for four sections of fifth grade. So we're right now at the point where we've got fifth or sixth grade, depending on what administration would like to move forward with. If they both go to four sections, both would go back to five sections. One would be at four, one would be at five. We've got some flexibility there that that would be led by the principals and the leadership's teams based on how that looks. Now, our discussion right now is because these are four sections, do you leave them as four sections going into sixth grade? Or you just keep fifth grade at four sections? You know, their staffing is in place, set up that way. It makes things easier as far as scheduling and scheduling all their specialist time. So we're still having discussions on how that piece exactly looks. So with all that data, you know, we've got budget data, we've got fund balance data, we've got enrollment data, we've got FTEs that we have to look at. I really like this graphic because it kind of reminds me when we're sitting in our executive cabinet meetings, what we're going through. And all these gears kind of keep shifting every time we meet. So I focus on the big one first, the quality of the solution and the fund balance. So our main, you know, our main driving goal is fund balance. We have to maintain that fund balance just so we stay healthy, so we stay fiscally responsible. But we also, I think equally, have to look at the quality of the solution. What are we doing to affect the quality of the solution? What are, how are we affecting programs? How are we affecting kids, staffing, all that? Are we going in the right direction that we need to go to meet the needs of the kids that we're trying to serve? So we got that big cog going there, that big wheel. So we start then playing in with our assumptions, our enrollment, and any legislative action. Some of those assumptions are just that, they're assumptions. You know, if that, the formula allowance changes and we get more money, well, there went that assumption in a good way. What if enrollment increases? What if enrollment decreases? We have to play those games. Any other legislative actions, if they come out with any other new mandates that requires a change in staffing, we have to follow that by law. The one thing with legislative actions that happen, anything drastic like that normally doesn't happen until the second year of the legislative session because they know schools don't have enough time when they don't approve their legislative bills until June 1st. It doesn't give schools, districts enough time to comply that first year. So that usually gives us some time to comply with those mandates. So the other pieces here is we look at the challenges. We look at our student needs. We look at special ed. We look at scheduling, all the challenges that we have. We look at the distance between the two buildings when it comes to staffing. How do we get staff back and forth if we have to start looking at sharing different staffing? Of course, we look at the budget. The principals might say one thing and I said, nope, that's not going to work. So we go back and forth on, on budgets and how do we allocate those different budgets? Back to the schedules. Our student-driven schedule at the high school is really driving this year's picture and our recommendation. Our facilities, we can't forget that we have to use some of that money on facilities and maintaining. And then curriculum is a big piece that we always have to continue to talk about. We made a huge increase in our literacy curriculum this year. So those focuses are all there. So with all that being said, we sit down at our executive cabinet meetings and we start laying it out then. We lay out the graph saying, how does this look? How are we going to reach our, our fund balance policy? How are we going to embrace that challenge? So the first line up here under the action, you'll see I've got different things listed and, you know, what this means or, you know, the year and the savings. So the first one is that legislative action increasing the formula allowance. Like I said before, about $150,000 at a one and a half percent increase in the formula allowance. So right there, that's a big boost because our target goal is between $300,000 and $400,000 that we needed to make in reductions or revenue to meet our fund balance of 20%. So $150,000 in legislative changes on the formula allowance. We've got a couple retirements at our high school level. And these are substantial for us because we have a couple of great, wonderful veteran teachers that are retiring. And veteran teachers, as you know, are usually at the top just about of the, of the salary schedule. They're, you know, a high-paid, they have a high-paid package, which is, which is great for them. But when some of those retire, we're going to automatically through attrition have some savings. So we put in an estimate of what we think those savings might be. Right now, I've got a little bit more on the music than I do on the biology. Now, based on Mr. Foss's discussion this week, his candidate pool right now is looking a little better. Sometimes some of those biology, physics, some of those areas are a little harder to fill that sometimes you're going to have to pay a little bit more because you have a veteran, more of a veteran teacher that applies for that. So we'll know more on that piece after he gets through that hiring, interviewing and hiring process. So we have some automatic savings right there. The other thing that we've directed to both Mr. Saboda and Mr. Foss is our high school overloads. As you know, from the past couple of years, every year, we've got these overloads that come in that cost us quite a bit of money. They're making some changes at their level, especially in the English department that's going to address eliminating those overloads. Now, there's one area that sometimes we have no control over and that has to do with our adaptive FIED. At the high school, we have one of our FIED teachers that's licensed in adaptive FIED. And if we have a special needs student that all of a sudden moves into the district or is identified as needing more adaptive FIED needs, we sometimes have to pull that staff member to provide those services, which then pushes one of our other FIED teachers into an overload. There's that kind of situation where I can think of that, you know, we might not be able to stop just because of, we only have the one that's licensed for adaptive FIED at the high school. We have a couple at the elementary, but one at the high school. So that's one area that might not hold true. But otherwise, we're not going to have all those high school overloads. The other two things internally that we can do as I work on the budget is we have, currently have about $100,000 budget in our technology area. So the purchase of the servers, of staff computers, lab computers, those type of things. We really kind of have caught up with everything right now. Staff has all made the rotation. We have all those computers purchased. And there's a little bit of infrastructure as far as servers that need to be replaced this summer. But the next thing that's up on the list for rotation would be one of the computer labs at the high school, which a lot of times has about a $50,000 price tag that goes with it. Visiting with the IT director and the principals, everybody was agreeing, if this can save a program or an FTE, let's look at this technology budget. If we can save $50,000 there, put off the replacement of that one computer lab for a year, it would be beneficial for us. The other discussion that we've had quite a bit on the computer labs is more and more districts are seeing, computer labs itself are going away. Teachers want the iPads, the, not the iPads at the high school, but your surfaces or your Chromebooks on a cart. They want them in the classroom. So that's more of an in-depth discussion that we want to continue to have versus just replacing those, that one computer lab. Do they still work? Yep, they do because it's the Mac lab that we can make work for another year. Then the second area that we talked about is each of the buildings, the principals have budget money for curriculum, for some equipment replacement, you know, like a teacher's desk, a teacher's chair, those type of things. And then some technology. We looked closely at that saying, can we back off on that a little bit year? We can still have some money in there to get anything that we really need. That's, you know, if a teacher has a broken chair, we can still do some of that, but we can back off on some of that for a year and have a savings there of about $60,000. Now, the other thing that I've talked about with them is in, especially like this area, that curriculum, is if this formula allowance goes higher and we end up seeing more money, if enrollment goes up and we see more money come in, I want to see us have like a priority list. So say we get another $20,000 in formula aid, then do we look at some curriculum purchases that we may be put off? So I think we'll sit down and... So I think we'll sit down and we'll identify, okay, what's our next biggest need that we want to bring some of that back in? So the next couple of things here on the list basically goes back to our student-driven schedule. So when Mr. Saboda and Mr. Foss, now I finished that scheduling process as he mentioned. It got a little delayed this year because of all our snow days. So we've been waiting and waiting for that process to get complete, but we're finally getting there. A lot of things were happening in that junior high level that made us kind of change. If you go back to that wheel, we thought we had things done. And now then it kind of changed again and that wheel kept turning for us. And I think I'm going to let them explain it a little bit more as we get going. But what it results in is a reduction in, of a point two FTE in our industrial tech teacher and a point five reduction in junior high general music. Not band, not choir, just junior high general music. So this is, this is a change, the kind of some things that we were talking about earlier. This industrial tech position, as you know, this year we were not able to full it with, when we advertised for it. We have a great person in there right now. We had to get the license variance on there. They've had the discussion with him. It, we have not had one candidate yet for that position after they keep posting it and keep posting it. Mr. Foss has talked to that person, very willing to come back at a point eight position to keep that, that program going. So we can eventually hopefully find a quality candidate to put in there. Any candidate right now because there is none. So the other one then is the point five junior high music. And what this relates to is the scheduling for the junior high electives. Came up with this because of all our other class electives at the junior high. So our art, our FIED, not FIED, art, ag, fax, industrial tech. That kept them, and business, yeah. Those five, it kept them all at, and again, I'll let them talk a little bit more and answer your questions. That kept them as all full-time people to be able to fill those schedules and the needs for the junior high kids. So if we move ahead with these things, what we would look at doing then is be bringing back, or not bringing back, we would keep that elementary section intact, which means we have that one resignation right now that's been approved from an elementary teacher, a higher-paid teacher that is leaving us. If we hire back an elementary teacher, that we'd still have a, of cost savings, roughly about twenty-five thousand dollars right now, estimate. So I'll keep going and then I'll let you ponder this because I know you're all thinking and pondering and then we'll bring up your questions for the principals on some of that. So to answer your question, do these actions meet our fund balance policy? And the answer to that is yes. The numbers that we've done and the work that we've done brings next year at a twenty percent. Now, that could end up at twenty-one percent because this is based off of how we end this June. As you know, in my budgeting from the past, I'm usually about a percent or so conservative. So this could end at, you know, twenty-four, it might be right at twenty-three, but that's going to affect how we end this year. So this is a strong twenty percent right here. Now I debated whether even to show you this, but you know, we have to look down the future as well. Based on all those current assumptions, based on the current operating referendum and our estimated FY nineteen fund balance, that is going to drop us to seventeen percent approximately for the following year. But I don't want you to get held up on that right now because there's a lot of things that have to play out before you're ever going to see a seven, a seventeen percent fund balance policy. So as I start to look ahead at the FY twenty-one challenges, a lot of things have to play out. So we start with our budget first. We have to look at the fund balance. We have to see what legislation does for this year and how it affects our formula, how it affects mandates and any other changes that we might be required to do. Special education is a huge piece of that. Our cross subsidy that we're paying for special ed out of our general education budget, that's a piece. Negotiations, how is that going to affect the overall budget? Is my assumption too low? Is my assumption high enough? Are we going to cover what our negotiations cost? If I'm assuming too low, we know that changes that picture as well. A referendum, as we know, is a big piece that will be going back to the voters if you decide this fall. If it passes, we'll have decisions. If it fails, we're going to have decisions. If it fails, we'll be out about three hundred thousand dollars in revenue. How does that affect everything and what are we going to have to look at? So don't, don't get hung up yet on FY twenty-one, fund balance of seventeen percent. Yes, we have to think about it, we have to be prepared. And that's what I do is I look at all these different things. But there's too many pieces right now to say, by golly, we're going to have to make more cuts because we're going to be at seventeen percent. I think negotiations is huge this year of where we end up. And until we know that piece, that's kind of our driving factor. And I think the state aid change in formula allowance is our other big driving factor. And I think we need those two pieces of the puzzle done before we can focus too much on that. And then we'll deal with that challenge moving forward. Again, being aware of it that it could happen, but preventing the landslide that could go with it if you're not prepared for some of these challenges as you look ahead. So I know you have questions. So I think we'll go back to this slide here, unless you want to jump someplace else first. But if we go back to this one, I think it'd be better if we had probably Mr. Foss explain a little bit more about that junior high scheduling piece because he can do that a lot better than I can. Is that all right or do you want to look at someplace else first?
Thank you, Michelle, for, for going through all that and giving you guys the, the information. Remember also just to remind you guys for tonight, you know, nothing is decided. This is just the, the conversation that we have and we, we typically then have some decisions. And not all these line items you make, you know, a board decision on, right? You know, the hiring of a new teacher, you don't, you know, obviously you make that decision, but in terms of that, that process. There will be some ULA processes with this coming up if, if, you know, if you guys decide to go and it will be on the April board meeting. They will disguise a, a little bit of this, but in terms of the process of where we were going with our marching orders of having a twenty percent per policy, this got us to where we were at. The reason that Michelle talked a little bit about the elementary section is because there was some conversation about that class size being within that recommendation of a reduction. We don't have that on the table of reducing that class size. It's replacing it. We value class size. We want to have as, as low a class sizes as possible. And so when the registration process came out and you put in some of those other numbers, or those other positions where they, they don't have it, we got to our, our target number of four hundred thousand. And that's what Michelle projected as being able to, to make those reductions in order for us to maintain that twenty percent fund balance. And so that's where we're at. So when you look at, at this, this is the, the list that we came up with. We got to the goal that we needed to get to. Obviously there's some discussion there and we'll be happy to answer some of those questions. But now I'll, I'll hand it over to Mr. Foss if you want to explain a little bit about the, the process of, of the scheduling.
As we talked about earlier, at the senior high, we do student-led scheduling. So what that means is when we come to register, like we did this fall, we open up all of our offerings and have the kids write down what they would like to have or what they would prefer to have in the next year. So what they registered for this spring would be for the nineteen, twenty school year next year. What we do after all those numbers come in is we sit down, it's myself and Mr. Saboda and then the two guidance counselors, Whitney Peters and Sue Magnuson, and we look at what those numbers are. Based upon what those numbers are, we decide which classes are going to be offered and which classes are not going to be offered. So for instance, if there is a principals of engineering class that would be offered that students could register in the field of industrial technology, but only three students registered for that class, that is not a class offering that we would, we would move forward with. We look at the eighteen students per elective to offer. If it's hovering around the eighteen, we'll go with it. If it's below the eighteen, we typically do not. When we look at all those numbers, we end up with, we end up playing like a shell game is the best that I can describe this. Because we have, let's say we get nine sections that will fill in the industrial technology role. And I'm just picking on that right now because we're looking at a reduction of point two FTE in the industrial tech field. To have a teacher be full-time, there has to be fifteen sections that that student or that teacher teaches. So we have a seven-hour day. Of that seven-hour day, five of those hours are instructional. One hour is a prep hour and one hour per contract is a supervisory hour. We have three terms. So if we're teaching five hours per term, times three terms, that's fifteen sections that a teacher needs to teach to remain full-time. Going back to the industrial tech position example that I gave, if we have seven course offerings that we're going to offer at the high school level to keep them full-time, we have to give them eight sections at the junior high level to bring them to their fifteen sections to keep them full-time. That is about what we're looking at right now for industrial tech. We can only have twenty-one sections of elective offered at the junior high level. Any more than that and we just run out of time in a year essentially to offer more electives. When we looked at all of our numbers, to keep fax, business and ag full-time, we had to give them essentially the, the majority of those twenty-one electives at the junior high level. To keep them full-time, that means that the general music, the half FTE that we're talking about here, there are no sections for that position to be teaching. We talked about a number of options in executive cabinet and all of those options resulted in a reduction or a cut in any combination of fax, business, ag, industrial tech and general music. So as we talked as an executive board, it was what can we do to retain the majority of our teacher at an FTE and still offer the, the most amount of electives to our students? This is a very crash course in explaining how that whole scheduling system works. So you may have some questions here, but I think I tried to cover most of how this looks when we're talking scheduling in an FTE. Do you have questions for me right now?
And so basically, in the end, I'm not sure if this one's on now. In the end, that student-driven formula kind of gives you your marching orders depending, you know, with the, with the number of classes. And if you're not running those classes at five, six kids, they get reduced at the high school level. And then what we try to do is you fill in because as he was explaining, the junior high kids have electives, but it's not like they choose that elective. But they do have the choice to still be in band or choir. Okay, so they still get to have that, that option or both. And if you choose not to be in one or the other, then we, you know, then there's this group that goes to art and then this group goes to fax and this group would go to agriculture and then they would switch over during their two-year time period going through something eighth grade, if that makes sense. And unfortunately with the way things.
Fell out, there is a, a reduction in, in the general music with the, in the junior high. And now we have to go through that process and, and unfortunately, there is that reduction. That reduction allows us to help get to our goal, unfortunately. But it also, we look at all the big picture and, and it does also help preserve some other areas as well. So we worked really hard at this to, to preserve programs and to preserve people as much as we possibly can. But we do have a policy that states that we want to be at twenty percent and, and that's what this budget is doing at this time. Do you guys have any questions for us?
I have one question, just to make sure I'm the newbie here. I'm just looking back at your bud revised budget for two thousand eighteen, nineteen and also two thousand nineteen, twenty, your preliminary. We're looking at expenditures roughly from both years, the same, roughly eighteen million, five hundred thousand. And then we have revenues looking at roughly the same, revenues are pretty much identical. That four hundred thousand is a difference then with the eighteen million, five hundred to eighteen million, one, is that what we're looking at?
Not all of it, some of it we'd be spending some fund balance.
Okay. So we're still, we're still kind of, is this deficit spending still, it's getting closer? Okay.
So if we have a twenty-three percent, we're counting on three percent of that fund balance to use first.
Okay.
So you're noticing a decrease in the revenues because I've included less students. Then upswing in the, the formula aid.
Yep.
But then also kind of conservative on the special ed aid and some of the federal aid that comes in.
Okay, thanks.
And our levy was less. Levy's another big factor, the levy was down if you remember when we did our levies. The levy was down.
Thank you.
And one thing I want to mention is when we talk about the FY twenty-one challenge or the FY twenty challenge, this is not unique to yourself. This is, every district in the state goes through this. You know, there's not very many districts around right now that aren't looking at some type of reductions, guessing what their assumptions are going to be. Every district is going through negotiations. So it's not just unique here. And you're going to see this in the paper quite a bit coming up now, negotiations and formula aid changes. So, you know, and randoms, all of that. Cross subsidy is really big right now. If you watch in the news and the headlines, a lot of districts are dealing with however fun. Special education because that special ed is covering their cross subsidy and special ed. So it's not unique to us. It's not like this is a brand new problem that just to sell pass. So just keep that in mind, but it's, this is unique to school finance and schools across.
One last thing that I just remembered that I wanted to bring up too is, is just from, you know, one of the things that were on the list was the overload. And I don't want you guys to unders, you know, because we've had overloads in the past, but it was dealing with trying to have that, that balancing act of what's best for kids, of being able to, you know, run classes of a manageable number. And so those overloads, you know, when the principals come to us with Michelle and I, with overloads, they know that they don't like to have that happen because we don't like them. But the reason that they've been presented in the past is because of the fact that it is what's best for kids. I don't want it to make, you know, we have this on the line that says, no overloads. And, and that's what our goal is, is to know overloads. But please know that in years past, when they've been brought forward to the board, it wasn't as if we were wanting overloads. It was because they were needed and they were, you know, basically required unless we were going to have, you know, forty-five, fifty kids in a classroom, you know, for some of those things. So I, I just wanted to be clear on that and, and because you could say that we say that to them every single year, no overloads. But the ones that do get brought to you guys' attention in years past aren't because they are needed.
And last comment then from me also, this is going to be changing for us for the next month or so. We could raise some, another change for the next month is what we're going to be. Maybe the principals could walk in tomorrow and say, look, this teacher decided to retire or this teacher is leaving. And all of a sudden that change, how some of that picture looks. So it's kind of a constant change in our, in our wheels here that we do. So we'll nail some of that over the next month and we'll, I have enough details. And most staff, they started to be talking about extra special ed needs and how that picture looks, you know, push back there and what we might need to do. So we're still going to be working on this. So it's not like we're leaving information now without it.
Right. And, and the other thing that I just want to mention is, you know, we are continually also looking at ways to reduce budgets in other areas. You know, we've been continually talking about our substitution costs. Are there things that we can do to reduce that particular budget? How about PSEO numbers? What about transportation? You know, things that, that are always just a part of our job in a, on a day-to-day basis. And so, you know, hopefully some of those categories we can continue to work on to save the districts some dollars by running things more efficiently or doing some things differently. Sometimes it's program changes and, and idea changes. Sometimes it may need to come through the negotiations process with some of those changes. But I hope you guys know that that's what we do and that's what our job is, is to continue to, to run as many programs and services, but run them as efficiently as possible. And, you know, I think that's kind of the, the challenge of all school districts because of the fact that you want to do as many things. many things you can for kids, but there's only so much that you can do, because there's a, there's, there's a budget that you have to be part of, so.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? One question that I have is the elementary teacher resignation. I know that last year and even previous years, we've always looked at the guidelines, we've always looked at, you know, when there's a retirement or resignation or so forth, and I guess in looking at not seeing the new elementary teach, or, or seeing the elementary teacher possible replacement, not being on the list currently as far as a, an eliminated position, I guess I wonder what is different this particular year than last year or in previous years? And, and I guess what I mean by that is in looking at the number of students at one oh seven, in looking at, last year we looked at five sections, we reduced it to four sections. It's a resignation, so it wouldn't be a loss of a person. I mean, everything that we discussed and looked at last year is kind of lined up the same way this year, and I guess I'm just kind of wondering, that was a, it was considered a frugal, efficient decision last year, wouldn't that be something that is set up again this year, almost identical for us to be considering?
Yeah. And, and what we're talking about, the one thing we don't keep going back to is, we reduce another FTE in a classroom teacher, it's going to start affecting our specialists, really, it's better. But, when we have one less section, it now affects, you know, now there'll be two sections less, but it could possibly increase your, your art teacher, your high FTE specialist, and music teacher, because they don't, they will now have another plus section. So, then you start looking at is the art teacher a point nine, and the music teacher a point eight, it affects all those specialists, because they don't have the same number of classes, so it gives me a scheduling, you know, making some, some things happen. Minutes building, you know, discussed at our level, that we have, that's kind of where we come back to, is how it's going to affect the other specialists. Some places we have a hard time hiring teachers full-time, because we know everybody's looking for a full-time job, and you start saying, you're going to be a point eight to a nine, you start losing to call the staff, or you have a hard time replacing some staff at a point eight, a point nine position. So, it's that whole balance of, of what's best for your, your staff, your classes, but
Yeah, you're absolutely right in, in terms of, of looking at it like that. When we looked at it this year, you know, to get to the number that we needed to have to meet, match our, our fund balance policy, it did need to be on the board, we value class size, we want to keep class size, but in terms of looking at it the lens that you looked at it, you're absolutely right, and, and if, if that gives us a little bit of wiggle room in terms of our budget, we should be making that recommendation, but because we were reaching our goal of, from, from a policy standpoint, we, we aren't putting it on the board this year. But, you're right.
Any other questions, comment, or discussion? Thank you for the information and the discussion. Item F, first reading of policies, action item. It is a recommendation of the policy committee to bring back the following policies for adoption at the next school board meeting. Two-ten, conflict of interest school board members. Two-eleven, criminal and civil action against school district board member, employee, or student. Four-oh-four, employee, employment, background checks and form. Four-twenty-seven, workload limits for certain special education teachers. Five-oh-five, distribution of non-school-sponsored materials on school premises by student. Five-oh-nine, enrollment of non-resident students in form. Five-ten, school activities. Five-eleven, student fundraising and form. Five-twenty, student surveys and public notice. Five-twenty-four, internet acceptable use and safety policy. Five-twenty-five, violence prevention applicable to students. Five-thirty, immunization requirements. Five-thirty-four, restrictive procedures. Six-oh-two, organization of school calendar and school day. Six-eleven, homeschooling. Six-fourteen, school board district testing, testing plan and procedures. Seven-ten, extracurricular transportation. Seven-eleven, videotaping on school bus. Nine-oh-three, visitors to school district buildings and sites. Is there a motion? Not a problem. Is there? I didn't write them, I didn't write them, that's right. Is there a second? I'll even second it, how about that? I'll, I'll give you a second on that one. Is there any question, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion by Jason and a second by Jamie to bring back the policies listed above for adoption at the next school board meeting. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say no, motion carries. Item G, second reading of policies, action item. The following policies received, thank goodness, their first reading at the February eleventh board meeting. It is a recommendation of the policy commit, committee, directors Lemke and Lockhart to, and the superintendent of schools to adopt these policies as listed there. Any, is there a motion? Thank goodness. Is there a second, please?
A second.
Thank you. Discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, I have a motion by Donna and a second by Alicia to adopt the policies as listed above. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed say no, motion carries. Item H, resolution to accept donations, action item. It's a recommendation of Superintendent Sanju, Sanju to adopt the resolution to accept donations. Is there a motion? And is there a second? I have a motion by John and a second by Alicia to adopt the, to accept the donations as listed. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say no, motion carry, carries. Thanks once again to all of the organizations and individuals and, and groups that are listed there. Another great list of donations and designations. Item I, miscellaneous, none at this time. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I don't know.
And is there a second? I have a motion by Don and a second by Jason to adjourn at nine PM. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say no, motion carries, we are adjourned.